Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, February 13th, 2024 Meeting of the Air Planning Board, and I have a paragraph I must read. This meeting-hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in-person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting-hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 833-6548-0732, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at DRuiz@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 144 prior to this meeting. Before I ask for a motion for the agenda, I'd like to suggest some reordering as a courtesy to the people attending today. What I'd like to suggest, and I would like your approval for, is to move up front the Washington Street, Panther Place covenant releases as number one. And then, number two, the discussion and vote on Kathleen as associate member, then followed by stormwater utility presentation, working group, zoning bylaw amendments, project use update, et cetera. Is that acceptable to everybody?
To approve the agenda with your suggestions, Mr. Chair.
Seconded.
I'm gonna have to go around the table for everyone. Mr. Diskin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Come on up. Danny? Is there anything in order to approve these releases?
Yes, so Mr. Levine is requesting the release from the covenant for lots 21, 22, 23, and 24. Let me just get this shared. All right, so you can see here, lots 21, 22, 23, and 24 are the lots that are being requested to be released. DPW did have a chance to review the request. All the infrastructure that is needed for these four lots are in. There is one that has an order of conditions, but that will be dealt with once they're at the, once they're ready to go to conservation for that. And at this point, we're all set with being able to release the lots.
Okay, great.
And just actually, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
So Jeff did raise, he had a question about this on whether if there was a surety or the covenant. So the covenant is in place right now. Once the developer requests release from all of the lots from the covenant, at that point, DPW will then go out to the site, review how much site work and construction is left, and then at that point, a surety will be put in place.
Honestly, Joe, I honestly couldn't remember what we did. Way back when.
We don't have any cash in place at this point in time.
No.
We have the covenant. One by one on the lots. So so far, we've only released, what, the first two? The two on the street? Well, the two on the street.
The only two were just lots 26 and 25.
Yes.
Now, the DPW has no issue with the fact that there's no rain garden, some drainage issues there with that. I mean, come on.
I got a good answer for you. Hopefully, hopefully you like the answer. So as we were working down, because we're gonna, I decided I wanted to build the houses on Brick Circle first. So we kind of get those going and then keep moving on, so we're kind of out of the way of people when they're living there. Is, is that if you look on the plan, you know, which it doesn't really show on this plan, but lots 26, 25, 24, and 23, there's a, mostly, mostly 26, 25, and 24, there's a, you know, there's a grade coming down, slope. So because of the time of year that we were building and everything else, we were building, we had dirt, and I, and I did, on purpose, did not put in the rain garden at the end of that cul-de-sac because we needed to get the slope established. So if I would have put the rain garden in too early, all the sediment and everything else would have just been blowing into it anyway. So I just use it as a, as a temporary sediment basin on purpose. With the, with the full intent of coming into this spring and summer, now that we have had those lawns established, that now, and now, my, my plan for this spring into the summer is to do the sidewalk for Brick Circle, the outside covering, probably the streetlights and the street trees, get that established, then get the rain garden in, so you don't get the silt, you know, blowing into it. Because I just, you just couldn't do it. I couldn't put it in that way. It would be out of order. It wouldn't be, it isn't what anybody would want it designed for. So there was a method to the madness.
Dan's okay with it. He's right here.
Yeah, Dan, the DPW director, yeah, I was okay with it, and I did indicate to Danny. We know, you know, for the most part, they've installed most utilities, but there are outstanding drainage items to be installed and kind of working through with Joe, like he mentioned. So we are okay.
Thank you. And you survived the big rainstorms we had recently without big problems.
Yeah, 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 well, because of that kind of thing. So we definitely, there definitely was a reason. It wasn't just, hey, let's not do it. It was, hey, we gotta get this established, get the, you know, you're just gonna have the silt right in the rain gardens, which is not, which is not defeating the whole purpose of the thing. So again, the plan is kind of more this spring into summer, start getting more of that infrastructure on Brick Circle done, and then, you know, moving back into the other stuff, so, thank you.
Any more discussion before we go into motions? Do I have a motion to release the board covenants as described for lots 21, 22, 23, 24? So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Diskin, how do you vote? Oh, wait, any discussion? I'm sorry. Any further discussion? No. Mr. Diskin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Congratulations, sir.
All right, good day. Very much the board's time.
I'll have them sign it, and then I'll get it over to you.
I can find you.
Do I sign this here?
Thank you very much. Appreciate the board's time.
Take it easy, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, don't let me forget.
Yep.
All right, next item on the agenda is to introduce you to, members to Kathleen Cashell, who I believe is with us on Zoom. Kathleen, do you have video access, and can you unmute yourself?
Sure she can. She's an IT specialist.
That's an understatement.
Oh, my God.
I wonder if she heard that we changed the order of the, oh.
Nope, she unmuted. Let's give her a moment. Oh.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My connection isn't very good.
Yes, we can, Kathleen.
If, if you said something, I'm going to need you to repeat it. My apologies.
We can hear you fine?
Yeah, the only thing I asked you to do was video and audio. So apparently I have a video difficulty, but you're on audio, and that's, that's perfectly sufficient. So I'm just gonna say a couple things and then allow you to make an introductory statement to the board. So as you remember, we were looking for an alternate to help us fill out quorums and ensure the member not be present. And Jeff alerted me that he had a couple of inquiries. He sent me contact information. And I heard from one of those people, and Kathleen Cashell is, is that person. She, I talked to her first, and then we, then we had a conversation between myself, the vice chair, Ken, and the town planner, Danny. And if you remember, she appeared at a previous meeting. And I think that Ken, myself, and Danny were all impressed with the qualifications that you can see. I mean, you can, you know, PhD candidate, data science, I think she can handle planning issues, and she's, she's, seems well-prepared for that, very impressive resume. And also, we all agree we were impressed with the quality of the questions she asked at the previous meeting. It showed real interest in what was going on, and also a sense of, you know, awareness about what's important. Of what's important. So what, what, what's gonna happen next is Kathleen's gonna introduce herself. We have a chance to ask some back and forth, and then we'll come to a vote. If we can advance her nomination to the select board, and the select board has the authority to a voter, voter in as an, as an opportunity. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So Kathleen, would you like to introduce yourself to everybody?
Sure. I think I have met most, if not all of you. I'm sorry, I was not able to be there in person tonight. Yeah, I am a research assistant at WPI. I'm working on my PhD in data science. My husband and I moved to town in, gosh, 2020. So we've been here for four years. As far as like my town involvement, I'm on the executive board of the Friends of the Air Library, and I was looking to be involved in another kind of town volunteer position, and Jeff had told me about the planning board associate position being open. And I was very excited about this opportunity because I wanted to kind of get back to the town, and I know land use is certainly very important, but also I really like kind of all the technical details that you all deal with and the opportunity to learn more. So I'm really excited about this position.
All right, thank you, Kathleen. Do the board members who haven't had a chance to engage Kathleen in the previous interviews, do they have any questions for her, or anything you'd like to talk about?
So what you, so we're all looking at Nathan because Julie and Kathleen are neighbors.
Right.
And I'm, and I was kind of, kind of the sponsor. So Nathan, you're the odd person out right now.
Let me act you in, so I'll jump in front of you. I actually had the opportunity to talk to Kathleen on the, on our street earlier this week. And so it would be an honor to work with Kathleen on this board. And your enthusiasm is contagious, so I'd be thrilled.
Yeah, I, I'll just say, I really appreciate Kathleen's, came into the previous meeting, really had some good questions and helped the conversation along. I think that's exactly what we're looking for. The, I would appreciate, Mr. Chair, if you just had a quick summary of the role again, either before or after our vote, but I think it'd be good to just restate what the role responsibility is.
The alternate has responsibilities very comparable to our own as, as former board members, except that they ordinarily do not vote. They can deliberate, they can discuss, they can raise questions, they can be part of the discussion. But ordinarily, they do not vote unless a formal member of the board wasn't present. And that, in that event, they could vote. Now, my understanding is that they can vote on the absence of a member even if we have a quorum. So if this, we have five, and even if we're, we're four, we have the quorum, she could still come in as that fifth person. She still would come in as that fifth person.
If I may, Mr. Chair, it also gives the opportunity for an applicant to get a supermajority even if a regular member is not present.
Right.
Which, which helps everybody moving forward.
Yes.
Or either get a denial or approval through a supermajority.
In my opinion, this role, filling this role, would put AIR once ahead, I get, ahead of the curve.
Exactly.
And I think I support it.
And it also would be helpful in the situation if there ever were a, a board member who needs to recuse themselves. They would also step. She would, she would step right in.
Yep, perfect.
Good, good.
Can I make a motion?
Please do.
I'd like to move that we appoint Kathleen Cashell to the role of
Associate Member.
Associate Member of the Air Planning Board. And I don't know if there's a timeframe on that? Nope, okay.
Well, the, once she gets, once we go to the board, the select board, there's a term limit and all that.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell, otherwise I won't include it in the motion. That's what I was asking for.
Yeah.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
So we as a board are appointing her to go to the board of selectmen, so we're recommending her, isn't it?
Correct, yes. Yeah, so the process is the
Point happens at the board of selectmen.
Yes, yeah, so it is, it's a recommendation to appoint her.
So hearing Mr. Diskin's concern, I recommend that we I recommend that we
You motion to recommend?
Motion to recommend
The appointment.
For the appointment of associate member for Kathleen Cashell. Thank you.
I will second link second that.
I'm, I'm tongue-tied tonight.
Any, any further discussion?
I just wanted to further talk about the importance of this position because we've had a vacancy here for a long time, and a lot of boards do in town. So this is a big deal for Kathleen to step up and fill this position because it helps all the boards maybe will look potentially to us and say, look, they've got that associate member, you know, a different, that appointment filled. And again, hopefully it shows that, you know, we're being proactive and making, you know, trying to stay there. And it's really, really important because there's so many times when someone can't be here. So I predict she'll be involved in a lot of the meetings and a lot of the discussion.
I do too. Thank you. Her appointment plus the adjustments we made at the Mullins rule, those two things are gonna go a long way to helping us resolve some of the previous problems and difficulties we have without having sufficient members to vote.
Yes.
That said, Mr. Diskin?
Aye.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Tillotson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Congratulations, Kathleen. I look forward to moving your nomination to the select board.
I'll be in contact with you, Kathleen.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kathleen. We lost you. What happened?
That was good.
She said butt? Okay, good. All right, thank you, Kathleen. I'm gonna swing to the other end of the table. I'm gonna invite Dan to come sit with me here, and we're going to go over, we have a stormwater presentation.
We did. Now we're back over here. Now, do I have to go over here as the chairman?
No.
What's that?
Do I have to go there?
No.
You do not.
I'm just
I don't.
We can all shift one way to the right just to pick.
So, so Danny, do you want me just to yell out, advance or what have you, or do you want?
Yeah, unless you want to hear. Just pass the keyboard.
Pass the keyboard.
You're giving a guy who's a communications expert the keyboard. You're in trouble now.
So, dear board members, so as you know, AIR has assembled a stormwater utility advisory work group led by Dan and Matt over at DPW, and with the help of Ty and Burns?
Ty and Bond.
Ty and Bond as consultants to discuss the, a way to fund our desperate, to fund projects related to stormwater management. And as part of that initiative, one, our goal is, we're looking towards the fall town meeting to, to bring a warrant to suggest a model for, for funding. And as part of that process, we're engaging the public in a series of presentations and discussions. We're going to, I think all the boards, so just all the land use-related boards.
Yeah, that's probably a good way to put it. Yeah, so we've already been to three, and this is our fourth stop.
Right, we were at Border Health last night, and then there were two others.
Yeah, we went to community preservation and conservation already. But there's a few more.
Please mark your calendars for February 28th. I believe that's a Wednesday, February 28th, 6 o'clock. We do have a guest speaker, Stephanie Covino from Blackstone, what's, do you remember the name of the?
Blackstone Watershed Collaborative.
Yeah.
Blackstone Watershed Collaborative. She's an experienced expert in the field of stormwater. She's gonna do a talk about stormwater and how municipalities have traditionally dealt with them and what the issues are and opportunities ahead. So that said, we do have a presentation for you we'd like to share. Next slide, please.
You can do it.
Oh!
Right arrow. There you go.
Okay. Do you want too many?
Yes, you did.
There we go.
There you go.
So what is stormwater? Well, you know, the way we, you can think about it, it rains. And in fact, we can anticipate, and in other towns have experienced this pushback, was like, this is a rain tax, this idea of funding for this. But I want to point out what we're really dealing with. If you look on the left, where it says undeveloped land.
Have to give her to that.
Whoops, it's now hidden.
Go back to the top, yeah.
In raw nature, stormwater isn't a problem. The, the natural landscape has already accommodated the water coming down and knows what to do with it. Hence, the absorption of water into the ground, the elevation of the water table, streams, brooks that become rivers, ponds, lakes, et cetera. But as soon as we engage in development, we interrupt many of the processes, the natural processes for reabsorbing water in the water cycle. For instance, we introduce impermeable surfaces that can prevent water from percolating down on land. Also, we have structures that need to be saved from water. It means that we can't, it means that any place we build that had been a potential floodplain is, is exposed to the hazards of potential flooding. So the issue is this, the rain is free, but managing it is not. It's an absolute responsibility that we have to bear. Okay? Maybe this one?
No.
Okay, this one.
Now you've gone too far.
The focus was gone because you touched the menu bar.
I'm so sorry.
Who's Dan's fault?
You wanna take this one?
Yeah, sure. So AIR's responsibilities, there's really two key responsibilities that the town has in managing its stormwater. You got the regulatory aspect, and the town is regulated by the EPA for its stormwater discharges, and that's through what's called an MS4 permit. Most of the board's probably aware of that, municipal separate storm sewer system. And then the other is managing the stormwater infrastructure that the town has on its roads and properties. And just by the numbers, there's 22 miles of drainage pipe, over 1,000 catch basins, almost 400 drain manholes, 100, almost 150 outfalls, 84 culverts that's ranging from, you know, a small 12-inch pipe up to a 10-foot span structure. That's the definition of a culvert. And then also kind of more recently is, in recent times, BMPs, best management practices. So those are stormwater treatment type methods such as, you know, a deep-sump catch basin is actually a BMP, but for example, a detention basin, a rain garden. So there's, there's treatment units too that require maintenance. So, so the town needs to maintain all this infrastructure in order to, to keep the water quality proper in the waterways. I think it's right. There you go.
And you can see here, this should be very familiar to us and to many in the audience. This is, of course, the map of our water, of our watershed, all our waterways, systems, and bodies of water. There is color coding here that isn't exactly about stormwater. It's just a, it's a
So, yeah, the, yeah, the state has a water quality assessment they do throughout the state called a 303D assessment. And the, the red is the, you'll see on here different colors for the various ponds. Those are waters. So the, the color coding is identifying certain impairments in those, those waters. So the red is impaired TMDL required, a total maximum daily load. So there's certain parameters, analytes in the water there that, that need to be cleaned up to, to better the water quality. I mean, that, you know, that starts with addressing the stormwater that's going into them. And you can see Flanagan Pond's orange impairment, not caused by a pollutant. So, you know, as you go through town, you'll see in not just AIR, but all the communities are dealing with these, these impairments, especially, you think of like the Charles River, for example, and the phosphorus impairments they have over there. They have special
It changes color depending on the town you're going through.
So the, the special, the, the communities around the Charles actually have a extra requirements to meet in their MS4 permit because of the impairments of it. And anyway, as MS4 permits go further into the future, I'd expect more stringent requirements of EPA for our waterways here.
I think the big takeaway from the slide is that we got a lot of water.
So I'm gonna ask a question, though.
Yeah.
The colored impairment is a contributing factor to the cost of handling stormwater.
Well, yeah, we do, it, maybe not exactly at this time, but I think as time goes on, EPA will, you know, require through the permitting process that certain pollutant of Grove Pond, for example, to be, you know, do what we can in our stormwater system, meet a certain goal, criteria, to prevent that pollutant from getting into that pond.
So is it safe to say that the current thinking around the stormwater, the rain tax, hate to use that, but the, the stormwater?
Utility.
Utility. That's to take care of the physical infrastructure here in town for stormwater management?
Yeah, so, you know, essentially, we'll get further into it in further slides, but the town's operating in capital budget right now and kind of how we want to be proactive.
Okay, thank you.
Nathan, just
There appear to be a lot of turquoise bodies.
Yeah, those are wet ones.
Yeah, those are wet ones. So this map, this is our MS4 stormwater map. It's available on the website on the DPW stormwater page. So if you want to get a closer look, that you can kind of get all the details, but
So the colors are over, are trans, are superimposed on top of the turquoise water?
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
So we, we do have a summary of what we've been doing up to date.
Those are the, those are the
Yeah, this is the summary.
Did I go too far ahead? Yes, these, that's what it's just
You're good.
Yeah, so we have been doing, so this is the requirements of MS4. And, and they include, as, look what we're doing now, public education, outreach, of course, illicit discharge detection elimination. So what does that require on DPW's part? What is that, is there?
We have to have a program in place to remove any illicit discharges into our stormwater system. So that's anything but rain that's going down the drain.
Got it.
You know, for example, it could be a cross connection with a sewer line into our drain line. It could be soaps that are entering the drain line through a catch basin, and then you have to find out what the source is doing. So basically, you start at the outfall, you sample for pollutants, and then if you find any, you head upstream and find out where that pollutant is coming from, and then you eliminate it. So that's a program that has to be put
Does that, does that also include, you know, I'm old enough to, if people would cross-connect their downspouts and they would connect a downspout, there's sump pumps in their basements and things like that.
But those are rainwater.
I'm sorry?
Um, certain, certain ones are exempt. It's in our, in our bylaw, which types of discharges are exempt. And there are some connections we allow, you know, perimeter drains, for example. Sometimes those are allowed into our system, case by case basis. So there are some exemptions, but
That's different by community, because it's, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
So Dana, you have to go out to the, some of the industrial locations in town and check around those parking lots or outfalls, for instance, on the east side of town with this big industry.
So
Excuse me?
Said I have done that.
You have done that?
At this time, we started all the publicly-owned outfalls. And if there's, you know, say there's a connection between our system and a private system. So for example, we have several connections with Mass DOT. Our systems interconnect because Mass DOT owns certain roads. So technically, our, you know, up in Devon's Crest, for example, where our water connects down from Devon's Crest into Littleton Road, that's where our, technically, our kind of our outfall is for the town because that's where it connects to Mass us. We check there. But it could work kind of the other way. You know, we check from our outfall, and if we came up to a point where we got to private drainage and there was a, you know, an issue coming from the private drainage, then we'd have to kind of, you know, work on it there by enforcing with the private drainage, and we're, hey, you have something coming down your drain into our system, and you have to take care of it. But we don't go on the private property.
You don't have to go on the property. You just have to go to the outlet and whatnot.
As long as we can, yeah.
I'll talk to you about it later, but
Numbers three and four, of course, we recognize, oversight of construction sites, of course, with the building inspector, and us, number four, particular permitting for new development and redevelopment. And as everyone knows, the, the reviews for the special permit for stormwater management, you know, we go over that with a fine-tooth comb, and we've been deeply involved with that. And then finally, all of us, good housekeeping and pollution prevention. This is, you know, DPW with clearing the drains, doing the street sweeping, catch, catch basins, inspection, maintenance, et cetera. So what do we do about, what is the title of that, can you give me, what have been doing so far? No, yes. So we have here, we've been, obviously, we've been paying for this with tax money with, through the general fund, that is our overall tax break, tax base. So as a consequence, instead of being ahead of it, we've been largely reactive, repairing infrastructure as, as needed. And unfortunately, the record information we have on the stormwater system is scarce. And yesterday, I learned from Dan that, you know, they've actually had to kind of piecemeal, rebuild a kind of map of where everything is because it hadn't been done before, and it's still a work in process. But, but one second.
That's normal for all the towns.
Yes, absolutely normal for, right, that's totally normal. And when you see below is the good on the left and the bad and the ugly on the right. We want to see a stormwater drain systems like, like on the left, you could see is a new installation, and it's nice and clean, and the water's gonna flow very effectively. On the right, you could see that not only is accumulated, has it accumulated a lot of sludge at the bottom, but from above, you can see all the breakthrough of roots from trees up above, et cetera. And so we know that this, that needs to be maintained or replaced, et cetera. So we're looking for something more proactive.
You didn't point out that those are two different types of pipes that you're looking at there.
They are.
Correct, yeah.
They are indeed.
Concrete pipe, then a
On the left, concrete. On the right, corrugated metal. And we do have a mix of pipe all through town. We have, you know, we also have vitrified clay and PVC, which is kind of the, you know, most reasons what's typically used today.
And when we, any work that we approve in this day and age, we would not use the corrugated metal pipe.
No, that, it doesn't last very long.
No, it's concrete. Very temporary, right?
Yeah, typically PVC or concrete, actually, sorry, HDPE or concrete. PVC is acceptable too, but it's more expensive typically, so usually HDPE.
Want to take this one?
Yeah, sure. Now, this is also what we've been doing so far. So in recent times, 2021 to 2022, the town developed a stormwater asset management plan. And so what that entailed was actually doing a, a limited mapping of our system, evaluation of many of the culverts in our system. And, you know, most of the areas we looked at were areas were known to be trouble areas. And so that helped us get an idea of what's out in our system. We also did the desktop exercise, but as we mentioned, our records were pretty poor, especially when you compare it to our water and sewer records, which are pretty good. So this will provide kind of the, the report, the evaluation ended up developing an asset management-based approach to, to, you know, guide us to maintain our stormwater system. So So asset management-based, what's that mean? It's kind of, it's based on criticality, so do we replace the drain pipe that's on a dead-end road, or do we replace, you know, in the same condition as the culvert that's on a major collector? You know, what's more important? You know, there's other drivers than just that variable that goes into all those decisions, especially in the way that the, the plan was, was developed, but, you know, just as a, you know, a far end example of either end of the spectrum. Also recently, the MS four permit, there was a new one in twenty sixteen from EPA, another one is expected within a year or so. The twenty sixteen permit expired in twenty twenty-three, but it, it kind of just keeps on going until they set up a new one. And the select board in-town meeting authorized funding to evaluate the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, and that's kind of where we're at now with the work group, so.
So why now? Because obviously, it's been raining forever, and obviously, we do, obviously, have stormwater infrastructure, but the risks are growing. Obviously, big one, climate change, and, and we know things are changing, we've seen it ourselves, and we look in October twenty-three, look what happened to our neighbors, and was it Lemonster, Fitchburg, Gardner, et cetera. And, and this is going to be a, come, an increased criticality, because with, with, with an impacted infrastructure stormwater, we have risk to homes and businesses, we have risk to maintaining transportation, the continuity of transportation and transit, plus economic continuity as a whole. Imagine if a major culvert on Main Street went down, and for multiple days, you know, people had to, people and trucks had to be rerouted, and how much that would cost? A lot of the infrastructure we have is old, and, and like, air is not unique in this at all, you know, where, this is a national problem of, of neglect, and we're facing a number of culverts that must be fixed or replaced soon. Do you want to tell, Dan, you tell a little bit right about the, a little bit about the picture on the lower right?
Yeah, so that's actually in air, that's the circled in green there, that's the Groton School Road, Road Culvert, it's over James Brook, it's, if you're heading from Tiny's toward Groton, toward Groton School, it's, it's up there just past our sewer pump station, almost at the Groton Line. So if anyone remembers the West Main Street Bridge pictures and video I did, it looks pretty similar. So you can tell that it's, it's, you know, in very poor condition, you can see one of the stone slabs there is totally fractured through, and we've actually done a temporary repair to span that area in the, above the, above that stone. So, you know, this is a, a project we're working on now, it's, it's currently in design, you know, in hopes that we could hopefully leverage some, some external funds from the town, but, but this is something that needs to be done, you know.
Quick question, the bottom left-hand picture, that is a pipe going through, I'm going to assume that's sewer, bottom, the, in the, the, no, inside the square, the rusted pipe in the top, in the bottom of it.
Uh, I...
That one, yeah.
Uh, I don't know what it is.
But the question is, if it was sewer and the road should have ruptured, we've then introduced more problems into our water.
Right.
And James Brook runs through a lot of different places, so...
That's why it's a special pipe.
It's an inter, it's an interconnect.
It's a welded steel.
And, and just so you know, too, the, the state central mass, climate change, resilient, resilient mass climate change report, states groundwater is one of the highest, one of the high risks due to climate change, and infrastructure is also one of the items in all regions in the climate assessment report, that states infrastructure is one of the top issues facing all governments, so.
Yeah, it's huge.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot about what carried in that pipe, but should that be the sewer connect for...
The risk.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Where's the, the pump stations, right, they have a pump station.
Pump stations, right, so I was trying to think of how the sewer from a Mandri way and...
Doesn't look like it's very deep, but it's sewer, that's the funny part.
So, what are the...
I think it goes, yeah, on the other side of the road, but that's...
It does.
Yeah, I think it runs down past the Zodiac and stuff like that, but I don't know. Again, your record's not mine.
We want to talk about the fiscal consequences of all these risks, and, and you can see that we're looking at a huge bump in expenditure coming up soon, and as, as I've heard Dan explain, that fiscal year twenty-six, what, that, that's the projected year to work on the culvert we just saw a second ago. You know, what we want to do, our goal is to arrive at a funding model that's, that spreads the pain out and gives us a reasonable way of dealing with the large amount of built-up infrastructure repair work that needs to be done.
Yeah.
Dan?
Yeah, so the, the work group actually, you know, looked at these historic and projected stormwater expenditures and sort of came up with where we're at now. So as you can see, in the previous years, there was anywhere, you know, right around three hundred, almost up to five hundred thousand spent on, the, the green is capital, the orange is operating, so it's always mostly capital, just getting some infrastructure replaced. But if we, you know, as we take into account stormwater asset management and being, having a proactive approach, there's many more culverts, I don't want, I shouldn't say many, but there's several other culverts, similar to that Groton School Road one, and we're sort of trying to space out those future expenditures to, to spread the costs, make it palatable, make it realistic. So you can see moving forward FY twenty-five through twenty-eight, capital operating, we start spending a little more money, almost up to a million, and, you know, some of that's design work, some of that's actually in, in construction work out in the system, and really kind of monies we should be spending to, to be ahead of this rather than behind it.
Exactly. This is Barry's favorite slide.
I think he's down in the basement.
So, we, yeah, so a lot of people don't know about one of our clerks that, that does work in the basement here at Town Hall and has done the math for us. So seriously, what are the options? We have two here, but there's actually a third. So one is that we just continue through the general fund and the tax base. There's a problem with that. Go ahead, Ken, did you have a question?
Didn't you just point out that part of it was capital and part of it was a, was a budget, and the larger part was capital?
Yes.
So the capital planning committee gets that request every year, or every year, whatever the case might be.
That's correct, yeah.
Then they put it into a part of the budget, or it could be a bond, it could be a number of different ways of doing it. Doesn't have to be necessarily a tax, is what I'm getting at, it could be funded by another source, a state source, a grant, Apple funds, something along, it's not always a tax impact.
Yeah, there are other, yeah, it couldn't just be directly taxed, there are, right.
Okay, thanks. So, that's fair, there's general fund, there's enterprise fund, there's the attempt to get, if we can, grants, but one of the things, it's hard to plan on grants, I mean, what we, grants are an opportunistic quality. If we're doing planning, we have to think about what are our consistent funding that we can actually rely on, that we have control over. And so that's why we focus on the general fund or potential enterprise fund, the enterprise fund would be comparable to what we do with water and sewer. There are monies or fees that are dedicated exclusively to this issue of the stormwater. The, an option that also is not up there is the do-nothing option, which is, frankly, is the default for many towns and municipalities, is to say, look, we can't deal with this, we'll deal with it, you know, as it comes, well, as it comes means when disaster strikes. And, and I just want to point out, that's not only the least responsible way of dealing with it, it's also the most expensive way of dealing with, not just because all the construction repair costs will escalate under emergency conditions, but because of all the consequences we discussed earlier with economic disruption, et cetera, which is why we want a better model moving forward.
Okay, advantages of an enterprise fund, so, you know, on this slide, there's, it's kind of loaded here, we probably broke the rule of number of words on the slide, but sustainable, long-term funding to meet program goals. So, so we did mention the asset management plan, we talked about what that is, and, and in that plan, we identified the value of air's drainage system is over ninety million dollars, so, so there's a lot of infrastructure out there. The small MS four general permit, we mentioned that already, so a new one we expect in the near future with more stringent requirements.
Right, so this is going to become more difficult, not easier, as the requirements become more stringent.
And then, so here's kind of the benefits of the enterprise fund, so it's stable, dedicated revenue source for financial sustainability, so we, we know what we're getting. And kind of the big one is equity, equitable and fair, so typically, it's on the future slides, you know, the, the stormwater fee for a given property is based on the impervious area of that property, because that's, you know, the, the best and most significant impact to stormwater is the impervious area, so that's how it kind of gets spread around, and the work group's kind of working this out right now, this isn't set in stone, but basically, the work group's setting a rate structure based on impervious area. Flexible, utility can pay for all aspects of the program, and down bottom, it's kind of cut off, but...
What is it in your paperwork?
Credit policy, so, you know, it gives incentives for properties to, to put stormwater treatment on their property, that this, this program, or I know, for this stormwater utility fee, because there can be a credit policy as part of that, you put in the stormwater treatment, then you get a reduction in your fee.
Would, similar to, we bought a house, it's got a huge U-shaped driveway, we don't use, removing impervious with that impact?
The, the work group's still looking at that, and I think we're not getting that granular, it, it's probably going to be a single-family home, you know, pays a flat single-family rate for each, yeah, up to a certain square footage that it triggers, it, it's basically breaking them up into equivalent residential units, I don't want to get into all the details.
But, but an underground structure or retention structure like that, those are great solutions, we see that in our plan, we see them in plans all the time.
We, I, I think that the way, the, the working group is thinking, the credit policy is more toward those large commercial spaces that have lots of impervious area that have a, a real need to reconsider.
The biggest impacts on the town.
Exactly.
And Katania did an amazing job on anything.
Yeah, for example, they already have the stormwater detention place, and they've met the most recent requirements, so they probably...
Yeah, but they also realize they're going to be there for, they, they're intending to stay for a while.
Yes.
They were going to go underground once, do it once, do it right, that's amazing what they did down there.
Yeah.
So.
So we just want to point out that this is not just a local issue, it's a regional issue, and the idea of an enterprise fund is also not new, there are about two thousand stormwater utilities in the entire US, and there are more than twenty just in, in Massachusetts, and some of the local, my eyesight is not good enough to read the names of the ones that are close to us, do you have, do you remember?
I can read them all.
Chelmsford, Westford, Chapel, Newton, Milton, Braintree. I know Wellesley recently.
Drake and Redding, Newton, Milton, Braintree.
And there's, and there's more, and there's more working on it similar to us.
Exactly.
We're not the only ones currently looking at it as well.
And most of them, like us, are looking at impervious air, area as the foundation for the fee model.
So when you see some pervious area, that would tend to tax more the commercial property and the industrial property, because they have the biggest parking lots, is that what you're thinking about?
Yes, amen.
Structure size, parking lot size, yeah, the structure's impervious.
What if I have a single-family home and the whole, my whole yard is pavement?
That would, that would allow it.
Multi-family home.
We wouldn't have allowed that, we wouldn't have allowed that. It used to be a car culture.
I've seen that slide where you showed us the pervious, you have a, a slide that shows the whole town, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We saw it in some of the conferences.
Yeah, the, the working group, the working group has it, so like Dan was saying, so it's going to be based on a, right now, there's, we're still working with the details of it, because I have my own questions on it, but right now, the proposed model is the average house is this, and it counts as one, and anybody that goes over that standard, so if a house is all pavement, ends up being two of what that one standard, then they are charged two. But we're still working that out, because I have my own questions on it, but that's essentially what we're discussing. So if you had a house that, that entire, big house, attached garage, all pavement, and ends up being larger than the average, then you're actually paying double what the average is, because you have more...
Try to create a baseline average, this is what the average house is.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's about thirty-two hundred square feet of impervious, something like that, and we worked it out through the mapping, like you said, and so you kind of base it off of there, and you're equivalent of residential.
The reason, I'm, I'm sorry, the reason we think of like a standard unit, like the single...
I like that, the way you're doing it, because...
Yeah, because what we don't want to get into is actually sending crews out with, with measuring tapes, yard, I mean, that would be prohibitively slow and expensive, and when you get down to it, with the single-family homes, they're so close that, that even the measurable differences would be almost, would be so marginal, and I think that, I think the desire for simplicity with a fair rate is greater than by the square foot of impervial surface.
I agree with you, and I see, I see a carrot in future development, future reuse of land that might be impervious edge to edge, that, where they, where they look at that and see that their rate would be higher, they may choose to make it, I mean, we as a planning board, would, as you said, we wouldn't allow it, this stormwater couch wouldn't work at all, but...
Right.
It's another carrot for people to think about, you know, instead of, instead of asphalt that's absolutely impervious, use semi-per, semi-impervious, or semi-impervious...
Pavers.
A paver or something else that's solved that problem.
Exactly.
If, if you're building an industrial situation, dealt with these, you need to get a fire truck up near the building, you don't have to put in a six thousand pound or, or a fourth, you know, you have to pour concrete, you can put in pavers that allow grass to be grown and will support the structure, will support the vehicle.
I think one of the, I know you have a complicated task there, but any of the new work that we see has to comply with state law, where everything on the site has to be contained within the site in the future, and that's probably been the case for, what, the last fifteen, ten or fifteen years for new work?
Yes.
Except for those people that have a site, we could name them probably all of us, that just go up and pave it on their own, pitch to the road, and it runs off their site onto the street. Now, that's a problem.
And then you also have the requirements of redevelopment, there's different standards, the, the stormwater handbook has been, has been updated, they haven't published it yet, that's coming within the next hopefully six months, the, well, Protection Act, which has a whole section on stormwater standards in it, that's being updated, and they're looking at basically removing the redevelopment section.
Well, what I'm trying to get at, maybe I'm wrong, but, is that we're pretty careful about new work that's done in town, we have that curve, the violations, I think, are in some of the oldest work, where they cover nothing, they don't have any drainage on the site, it just runs right off, there's no curbing, there's no catch basins, so that's going to be a challenge for you guys to figure out how that gets placed versus someone who's already, you know, collecting everything and treating it on-site.
Which is why I asked about the possibility of a credit for removal of impervious surface, because, I mean, I don't know what the fee structure is, but I know it's going to cost to pull it out, and for me, ten years, that might make, make sense, I don't want it, you know, here we go.
So that, that's a perfect, that's the perfect segue to, to the, the next steps. So obviously, we've, we've convened an advisory work group, three of them are here, at least, wait, four, four, aren't you on it? No, you're not, Julia's, you are, there is, I am.
That was two meetings.
I'm sorry, I thought...
Yeah, I am.
Dan, who else is on this advisory?
We have Matt, Janice Livingston, we also have a member from CPF.
Someone from finance?
Beth Sudemeyer.
Yeah, Beth Sudemeyer. Some from finance.
Jim from finance.
From finance?
Yeah, there's a whole roster, we're getting into kind of our website, and the website has a repository of a lot of information, especially if you want to get further in the weeds.
Absolutely.
Ken probably does.
So I just wanted to give, so if you go, the website's going to be the go-to for us, I want to say, the work group is, is, is active right now. We are, we are refining, we're still in the process of refining the budget projections and working on a rate structure. We will go to town council for guidance about consistency with bylaws, regulations, and of course, how to prepare it appropriately for the town warrant. Our goal is to bring a warrant to the fall town meeting this year twenty twenty-four, and as part of that, we're doing a major outreach campaign, this is part of it, you know, we're, we're developing and distributing educational materials, flyers, et cetera, we're doing meetings to all the land use oriented boards and groups in town, we have that February twenty-eighth presentation by Stephanie Cavino.
Actually, put that on our website as well.
And that's going to be on the website, so there's going to be all, there's, it's, it's all about communication and public input and all this activity, and that will go into the final preparation of the warrant.
Yeah, so this is kind of our first step in outreach, and, and this is a long process, if you think of fall town meeting and how, you know, we really will be recommending to the select board, you know, what, you know, what the work group findings are and we really will be recommending to the select board, you know, what, you know, what the work group findings are and what we think. So it would run through the select board, there'll be public input, there'll be, you know, informational sessions. We're going to have business meetings. There's a lot more to come. This is just step one. And, you know, we want, and thank, thank the planning board for letting us.
You're going to have to hold hearings for it. You have to hold hearings for it also.
Yes, I think so, yeah, later on.
October comes up fast, guys.
Yeah, right.
Halloween's on, so.
So I would, you know, if you go to the website, it's got a list there. We have an outreach plan that's, you know, kind of a living document.
So let me ask this, for those of us who can't memorize that URL, if you go to the air page, is it obvious on the homepage where to click for the stormwater utility?
If you go to the homepage, under Boards and Commissions, it's under there.
Under Boards and Commissions on the homepage. You'll find somewhere under Boards and Commissions.
As part of outreach, would it be something to send an email out about it at some point? Like I got dog licensing email just last week.
Yeah, I can, I just started creating. I did my first, I didn't post it yet, my first Facebook post.
Those are helpful. But also, the town has an email list?
Yep.
And I think we have had a couple of emails going on on this, on the air announcements.
Yes, they have been.
You know, the work group's been meeting in hybrid, actually says it here. And all those meetings end up online with a Zoom. And typically, they're at the DPW conference room. So if anyone wants to attend, we've had some public there.
I think I said it earlier recently.
Why is there a little dinosaur inside the QR code?
That's what Google automatically gives you.
When you create, it's when you create.
That's Jeff Bezos' favorite animal.
The QR code.
Julie Kathleen can give us a press.
They all have dinosaurs in them?
It's just how they created.
Okay, so, yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, anybody has any questions?
Nathan has a question.
I'm in town hall all day, that it's open, anyone can come by. I have a copy of that MS4 map on the back of my door, too, if anyone wants to take a look at it. Stormwater's my thing.
Thank you for doing this. This is not an easy task. And there's going to be a lot of pushback on this.
Oh.
So there's going to be a lot of pushback on this.
Look, no one, no one, no one looks forward to another fee. We understand that. I mean, really, we do. And it is painful as heck. I am not looking forward to standing up at town meeting saying, hi, we have a new fee proposal for you. However, I'd rather do that than come before a meeting after a crisis and explain how come we didn't do anything to prevent this? Why didn't we take responsible actions to address this? I mean, that is the worst, the worst outcome.
So my memory is not long in this town, less than a decade. And just before we got here, Oakwood Strives, Culver, you weren't here at that point. There was a flood along pond. A beaver dam let go, it went through Pine Metal Pond, and it removed the road.
Yes.
Then we've got the one up here on Cambridge Street, again, my direction. Last year, the year before, the culvert failed, we had to fix that as a response fix. Yes, we did have the West Main Street. Was that sewer or stormwater sewer?
Sewer.
Oh, that was sewer.
Sewer, okay. But still, it's, it's just, we have them all around. Over on Shaker Pond, on Shaker, Shaker Road. There's been times when that culvert's been clogged up and we had to go over and fix it. These things happen.
In the 15 years that I've been working for towns, I used to work and live in Shirley. There was no, all the roads coming into area were blocked from Shirley. Here to rainwater, stormwater, so it happens.
So Pauline from.
Oh, she's gone, sorry, their question, yes.
Wait, but didn't Nathan have a question? Yeah, Nathan had a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Pauline.
Pauline, we'll take you in one second.
Yeah, because Nathan is hand up early. I'm sorry, Nathan, what's on?
So if this does not pass, just to be clear, does it mean some of these, some of these things will still, the infrastructure will still be, maybe not all of the infrastructure will get dealt with in an entirely manner, but some will still through the general fund and the existing mechanism. So it's not, it's not like everything comes to a stop if this doesn't, we just stay in the status quo, which is not good.
Yeah, probably the level of service wouldn't be where we, where, you know, I recommend that it be, is what I would say. And, you know, the general fund, long term, is that sustainable? That's kind of a question.
Is there any, I'm just, I'm sorry to follow Nathan. This is being brought to us by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As, we have to do this, correct?
This utility?
Yes.
No.
Okay, fine.
Okay, Pauline?
Nathan's done.
Pauline?
Thank you. Thank you for letting me ask a simple question. You are convening an advisory group, according to your last slide, which I no longer can see. You mentioned a couple of people, most of whom were either appointed or elected officials. How many residents do you intend to have on that advisory committee?
I might have to look at the roster, who's on there, Pauline.
Well, I'm a resident.
Beth is a resident.
Matt's a resident.
Yeah, but you're elected, you're elected. I'm thinking of unelected, unappointed individual residents who might have a different view from everyone else.
And why, and why is it illegitimate if the people there are people elected to do exactly these, these activities? That's, that's, we are fulfilled, that is the fulfillment of the public will, is that they have elected officials who do participate in committees and groups like this. That's the whole point.
Jonathan, I said nothing about illegitimate. I just said, I only ask what residents who are neither appointed nor elected are you asking to have on this committee? Most committees have a planning, finding, opening, and operating. A lot of committees have actual residents who are just out here taxpayers.
Yep.
I'm asked that. It's a simple question.
Yeah, I hear you.
Say none.
I think it was Beth, Beth Sudemeyer?
Yeah, Beth is on, yeah. I mean, technically, there's, there's four residents who live in town, and three of them are on certain boards. But, yeah, the roster's up on the webpage if you want to look at it. You know, we got the business rep up there, and we're trying to get, you know, you know, it's not like I didn't try to reach out to a lot of people. You know, it's hard to get the involvement sometimes, too.
Dan, I'm not questioning you. I did hear that a couple of businesses were on there. I did not hear any individual resident. Hence my question. I'll follow up with you myself, all right? Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Yes, thank you for the representation.
Thank you.
Dan, special, thank you very much.
You too.
I really appreciate your help in doing this. No, thank you for the. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for it.
And are we ready to bring Janet up?
Yeah, we're not, Janet, Janet.
Janet! Come up, come up and join us.
Yay, you're getting her, Janet.
Do we take a break, or do you want to just keep going?
Would you like a break?
You want a break?
Would that be okay?
That'd be fine.
We're going to take a break, yeah, we're going to take five. And we convene, yep, thank you. Over recess, we'll come back. Thanks. Welcome back. And we have a presentation regarding the.
Oh, oh, sorry. We're not unmuted. Now, there we go.
Oh, now unmuted, okay, great. Welcome back, everybody. And Janet Provodakis is going to give us a summary of the activity of a working group working on potential zoning bylaw amendments.
We.
Janet, take it away.
You got it. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here because I'm giving you guys work to do, not just me. The working group, that is an informal working group. It's not as formal as the Stormwater Enterprise Fund group. So all we did is pretty much meet up individuals. Let's see, really, I know Ken gave a nice little recap, high-end recap, last planning board meeting. You know, so you can get an idea of what the working group was. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to today dive into some of those recommendations because, again, this is the group that has to go ahead. And if we're going to, if you're going to make changes to the zoning bylaw, planning board has to go ahead and do it.
Janet, if you, I'm sorry, if you could give us some context about why you're even looking at changes, what's the, okay, thank you.
Yeah, oh, yeah, for sure. And that's why, you know, what I want to do for those individuals who haven't heard it before, the working group was consist of a lot of members that have got multiple hats of being volunteers in the town. We've got individuals from the Community Preservation Committee. I'm wearing the hat now of the Affordable Housing Committee. And we've got individuals with the Disability Committee as well as the Planning Board. And then we've got also town employees. Danny was one, Alicia, who's on the Affordable Housing with the Economics and Community Development, as well as Charlie Schultz, I mean, he's the one, he's the building inspector. And this is one good thing about the town is we've got full-time town planner, full-time building inspector. And then even Mike Wallace came in, not the news broadcaster. Every time I say his name.
That's where I know the name from.
That's right. I know, to go ahead and be assistants with Charlie. So it's great because, again, we would just go ahead and talk about it. Because what ends up happening is listening to the people in town, they want to be able to get a good inventory of housing. You know, like, say, you've got elderly individuals who want to downsize. They can't, they can't really, they can get good money for their house now, but they can't move anywhere.
Exactly.
All right?
Where do they go?
That's right, all right? And then you've got, you know, individuals who work for the town, right? I mean, say, you know, people here at town hall, firefighters, police. If you look at, you know, just the regular salary, they can't afford to live in town, all right? So you've also got all these businesses that you were talking about with the stormwater. You've got these individuals, too, that want to live in town, keep people close. Again, they can't afford to live here. So we want to try to find ways, and this is what the working group looked at, of getting that inventory. We also want to focus in on affordable housing. Again, that's one of my, you know, my, my strong, strong feelings where we need to be able to have people live in this town. And we're going to be, when you're looking at housing, it's not necessarily to buy a house, it's also to rent. And again, you guys are all aware with, you know, affordable, which is the big A, which is subsidized. All that's, you know, being taken care of by either the state or the federal government. When you look at the little As, those are privately held.
Right.
All right, and if we can help some of the individuals, and there's a lot of individuals here in town that do have those little As for affordable rents, where it's amazing when I go ahead and I talk to other people, like, say, you know, there's some apartments, Jackson Road, West Main, you know, where they are still reasonably rent, you don't have that market rate. And since we are in the Boston market, that market rate is pretty high for individuals trying to live here. So with that, we created, like I say, it's just an informal working group that we could just bounce ideas off of each other. And it was great having, you know, again, Danny, Charlie, you know, to do that. So one thing that I wanted to bring up is Alicia, in some of her presentations at the Housing Forum, as well as the CDBG Program Forum that they had, the public hearing, she emphasized that, and this is all on the website, you know, of her presentations, but I did make a copy of the housing units by structure type. Air is very lucky. We do have a lot of single-family houses and such, but we also have multi-family units. And this is one thing that Air, you know, is known for, that we do have all that. However, if we look at what's been built over the past few years, and again, this is the developers. I mean, they can come in and build whatever they want, but it's been focused on single-family. So what the working group was looking at is different ways to make it more incentivized, you know, to say, okay, great, we've got a section now that you all worked on for inclusionary housing, all right? Let's make sure that, you know, that is available for developers to say, okay, great. If we can go ahead and do this after the fifth unit, maybe we can get two more affordable units inside there. It's a win-win for the town. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, again, land is tight within the town, but let's use it wisely.
Correct.
Okay, and like I say, come up with a new, a variety of inventory so that you can hit different price points. Focusing, though, again, with my heart, on affordable housing and such. So with that, you know, you get the different income levels. Going to give you guys work to do. The, I'm going to switch now and focus in more of what the housing unit, you know, what the working group discussed. I'm going to be looking at the inclusionary housing at 10.3. I, when Danny was gone, looking at it, there is a, I get that up there. What Danny was able to do is, right now, inside the bylaw, it has a statement about 750 square foot. And having that type of limitation isn't really helping the way that developers are looking at it. You want them to be able to focus in on what's in that dwelling unit. How big are the bedrooms? How big is the bathroom? You know, look at how to make it work. And what they have is this Massachusetts Multifamily New Construction Design Requirement and Guidelines. Say that five times faster than I.
No kidding.
Okay, and with that, this will be a good guideline that we can point to instead of limiting it just to a 750.
And so with this, so specifically, I can use it as an example, is the West Main Street project, the 201, 205. We ran into the barrier of the 750 square feet and minimum square foot. And how do, how do we get around that? How do we allow units to be built that are affordable? Because when you look at the project that they were talking about and how Massachusetts has the design requirements on their guidelines and making a unit affordable, they have specific sizes that they're targeting. And so I was in agreement with them on, you know, what the size of those studios should be, but the problem was that 750 in our bylaw. And so what we did was to actually allow for projects that were coming in for five units or more, we built in this, this new section on the inclusionary housing, which references the actual Massachusetts Multifamily New Construction Design Requirements and Guidelines. And within that, it gives the planning board the authority to allow new constructions to meet the target sizes that are within this, within their guidelines. And if you look at the actual guideline.
Piece of work.
So this, this is a very full, a big document that I can send out to everybody. Then I believe that most of the planning board has it, but I can send it out again. And it gives you an exact what they're looking for for target sizes.
And I think the beauty of this, the way that this is phrased, is that we'll always be current with the state guidelines.
Correct.
We don't have to keep coming back and revising numbers. We're automatically aligned with the state.
Correct. It automatically will reference the document. And so when the document gets updated and if the sizes get changed, that it, we don't have to keep going back to change it. And so what they target for unit sizes is studio is 500, right around 500 square feet. One bedroom, 600 square feet. Two bedroom, 750 square feet. Three bedroom is 1,000 square feet, and four bedroom is 1,100 square feet. And so these were actually the 40B project on Fitchburg Road. These are what the target sizes were on those units over there. Those, that's what they're going to be. And that's what was approved on their, for their design plans. So.
Because they didn't have to go.
That's right, because you were 40B's.
No, I understand, no, I get it. No, I understand it, yep.
So going forward in the future, when a project that a developer comes in and wants to build 90 units, say, this gives them the ability to still be able to put in those affordable, those sizes that are affordable. And the 750 won't affect them.
Okay.
The 750 will still be in place, and that would be for projects that are anything under five units. So like, and the reason we did that was because most people aren't going to build a two, you know, two studios. Like, that's just not something you would do. It's, it's, when you're building that, when you're building less units, you're building bigger houses. You're building bigger for that.
So again, because I'm a little slow, I just want to make sure I have it. So under the proposal, under anything fewer than five units, the 750 holds. We haven't changed that. But because of the inclusionary language change that we're recommending here, that your working group recommends, five plus automatically goes right into this inclusionary housing rule. Correct. And then it will just follow whatever the guidelines the state has. Okay, got it.
Because, yeah, because the inclusionary housing was to help us build more affordable housing.
Yeah.
I think that's very important to emphasize.
Yes.
That the, in all of the public communication, that this, this change is addressing only developments of five units and above.
Exactly.
Single families, two families, three and four are not affected by this change and will remain as they are. Therefore, existing accessory dwelling unit regulation bylaws stay in place. I just think that can't be stated clear enough.
Yes, yes. This is specifically for five or more. And, and this is really to emphasize and incentivize affordable housing. And making, so when a developer comes in and wants those bigger projects, it incentivizes them to actually be able to build at what affordable housing should be.
I got a couple, a couple things. Please. Just, just to add a little bit to it. What happened with, again, on West, using West Main Street as an example, regarding the 750, we actually did go to town council. Charlie Schultz went to town council because we were trying to determine if there was a way for us to exclude the affordable units from the 750 minimum. To get the inclusion, the affordable units that we were looking for. Because there was somewhere in the vicinity of 20 to 30 potential affordables. But the decision came back that because of this language, we couldn't create another spot. You know, where we said, oh, wait a minute, you know, we can just make an exception for the affordables. It had to apply across the board. It had to apply across the board. So this gets us over, the other thing I wanted to add was, we had a lot of discussion in the working group about how we would get to the 750, should we just go to where it says 750?
Right.
And change it. And we went through a lot of discussion and we, we talked to outside, got outside help, I think from Arneka, Judy Barrett.
Judy Barrett and town council.
And also town council. So this decision to get into the inclusionary area, which starts with 10.3, inclusionary housing.
Very recent.
Was, came out of a number of different discussions of how it would be the best way to handle this. So that we didn't hit the town with a big change on the minimum size for people who might wanna put addition on, or just had a few things in the house, whatever, you know, a couple of units, whatever the case might be. But as we got to the better projects, as been explained, bigger projects, we would go with this particular application. And that document, which I did read, not only covers the, way more than the sizes. In other words, that thing covers everything from wind to insulation to roofing, you name it, it's covered. And that, if we build everything in the town of air, according to that document, we'd be in great shape. That, that's first-class work in there, uh, as far as how the whole project goes from start to finish. So it's very, very comprehensive, um, which is probably what was needed for, for 40Bs and things like that. So you wouldn't have people coming in with lower standards and whatnot. So it's, it's a really high quality. So for any reference that we have to that is only gonna be a benefit in, in our zoning bylaws, I believe. So that's all I had to add to that little piece.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Nathan.
I just would state also clearly that we are referring to it and it is preferred, um, but it is not Right. We're not, we're not adopting it as a
Well, the important part is the second paragraph, right? We have the authority.
Yes. And I think what, what Nathan is just trying to differ, say, it's not, it's not a requirement, it's preferred.
But I think what typically will happen is that most people who will look at it and understand, that's the way to go, to just get right through the planning board. Instead of saying, look, I notice your preferred method is this, and you got, but no, I wanna do it differently.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think we're gonna get that kind of debate, typically.
Typically.
No, and to Janet's point, when she opened, this is, this is directing applicants to the
The right area.
path of least resistance.
Yeah. Good.
It's, it'll streamline, uh, the process.
That language, that's your language?
Yeah, that's my language.
Okay, so I mean, we could tweak it if we want. If we wanted to say this, if we wanna change some of that wording for prefer it to something else, we could come up with it.
Well, you gotta remember that this is just the, the suggestion, okay? I mean, again, I'm
Yeah.
It's, it's all gonna be in your hands right now, that you're gonna have to do the public hearing, you know, get the feedback, the input from the public. Um, I mean, again, the working group would love to have this be part of Springtown meeting, so, which means you've gotta get those public hearings next
Yes, and I
Can you talk about that for a minute?
And so timeline as of right now, and I, I've been in talks with Robert about this. Um, it's looking like we're going to be holding public hearings on this in March, so
And we'll make, we'll make it?
Yeah, you need the warrant articles done by the end of March.
Yeah.
March 29th.
I expect to, what my proposal as of right now would be, our first meeting in March, we'd have the opening of the public hearing on these two, uh, on these amendments, because we'll have some other amendments that will be coming to us that are not from the working group. Um, and those will all be in the public, um, we'll have a public hearing the first meeting in March.
Perfect.
And I propose that most likely we'll hold it open for the next meeting in March, so that we can have a little bit more input, make sure that everyone still has the opportunity to come in and get their comments in. Um, and then we'd vote at the end of March.
Okay.
And then we'd be, we'd have, we'd already be all set to have it brought to a town meeting at the end of April.
I was just calculating in my head, yeah, there's, there's time there. Okay, good.
And we would most likely try to have some, some outreach and community, uh, you know, between the end of March and be, uh, before town meeting.
You're gonna be responsible for the advertising?
Yes, yep, I'm in charge of all that.
ASAP, whatever.
And what I've done is I've gone ahead and I, I, I went to other boards and committees before coming here, so people know that this is gonna be happening. Um, so I went to Conturbation before, as well as CPC, and then I'll be going to the zoning board on the 21st.
Yes.
All right, so with that.
I see that Pauline's hand is up?
I just have one thing that I was, is that okay if I?
Yeah, Julie first, and yep.
Um, I just think with the language that we're referring to a higher level or, or the state An external document is language we just did in the past town meeting. I think the police department actually had something and did something similar. So at least as a town, we had two, at least two things that time where we were really trying to be more clear and consistent with state, state things, and it kept us current.
Like, I feel like
The dog.
Yeah, I felt like it was really clear in that town meeting that we were trying to allow these documents to stay more current rather than being so detailed. So I, I think it helps us that we're more prepared for language like this.
It also brings us, and excuse me, it brings to us people who are, they already know what they're trying to build.
Right.
Okay, coming into a small community like us and trying to figure it out based on our bylaws doesn't help us get there and doesn't help them get there. This is a way of streamlining it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. I wish condos were built like that when I was managing condos. Simple stuff like ice dam control.
Just quick, do we need to put the date of this document? Do you guys feel comfortable that as it revises with a lot of, I think we should refer to the actual date was written?
So the only
But then if they update it, we'd have to adjust it.
So every time it updates, since this is a zoning bylaw, we would have to go to town meeting to amend it.
I get it. The only problem is when they change it, they may name it a different document the next time.
Right.
Which they probably will do. The state will change the way they call it or something like that.
Well, I, I noticed I noticed E O H L, E O H L C, L, whatever, E O H L C is not mentioned in that document, and that's
It's D H C D.
No, it's not, it's no longer D H C D.
It's at the bottom of the document.
No, correct. This, this was prior to
2022.
This is 2022. This is where I'm getting that. D H C is no longer in existence.
Okay, so I think we
We'll have to get some
The state guidelines, the requirements, whatever the name is.
Um, I can
Let's check it out with somebody.
Yes. Yeah, we, I can do some, some, some
Or you might say this one date and any, and, and all of its successors.
Something.
Yeah, I can talk to county council on
That could be good.
how we can word it. Because if we put, I'm sorry, we put the, the exact one and date in there, and there's a change that's more expensive for developers, they'll argue that they can use that one with us and not the newest
Maybe, but that's what we want. This is really amazing. So anyway, that's just a thought.
All right, we got Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Chair again. Um, Mr. Ruiz, are these proposed zoning changes in the documents you uploaded today? I looked real quick and I didn't see them.
No, they were not. They were put in, um, I did not put those up. At the last minute, we, we were discussing these, so I did not have those put up. I'll put those up so that you can look at them tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you. And as to my friend, Mr. Diskin's comment, you can always just do version 1.1.1.1 and so on and so forth as these amendments are made. And that way we can keep track of what was what, when.
Okay.
And I, I encourage you to do that, but I thank you for letting me intercede.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's one more.
Okay, go ahead, please.
There's one more, all right. Um, what the working group also did is look at section 5.2, the table of use regulations, focusing only on residential, okay? Um, again, it was a lot to, to, to bite off. Um, so what we did is we wanted to, I mean, do you wanna move, yeah, because we can see the A1 and A2, the two different sections, um, for the zoning districts. What we were looking for is ways, and, um, just to give you an idea, is the changing the 1.2, the two-family dwelling, so that it's a permitted process. And I emphasized to all the other committees is, when it's a permitted process, it still has to go through a process. It's not like you can just build a two-family dwelling anywhere. You gotta go through the, the building commissioner. And with the building commissioner, if Charlie's looking at it and he's got questions, he's gonna be bringing it to the planning board, he's gonna be bringing it to DPW, and everything. So it's not like it's a free ride. All right, I, I just, again, I'm, I'm probably talking to the choir here, so I'm sorry.
It's not a free ride, but it is by right.
It's by right. Mm-hmm, yeah, and then, you know, the
And just, just quickly on that.
Go ahead.
Previously, it was a special permit, which is still by right, but can be conditioned. That's, so that's the difference on that. Uh, and, and what, why we did this was, you know, this allows two families to be built, uh, which helps us increase the inventory in the town, which, in a, in a way, it also affects how much the cost of, of units are. Um, you know, the more inventory that you have, the less the costs are. You know, the less inventory you have, the higher the costs are.
I think we should point out that that is the proposed revised table.
Correct.
Oh, yes, yes.
We wanna show, I'm not sure if we wanna start with the original table or just go back and forth, but
Not so guys know what anyone I think, right?
Okay.
So for example, I was curious if we look at the, um, I'm not gonna touch the screen, but I'm gonna point to it. At this 1.3 row, where we see special permit by the planning board, what were they before?
Nos.
They were nos.
They were just nos?
They were nos.
Not allowed.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we had those as not allowed. And, and the reason we, we moved to a special permit was because, uh, this will allow townhouses and multifamilies to be built in the A1 and A2 zone. So right now, it was only, you know, single-family and then the special permit for multifamily. Uh, this allows developers to actually build, you know, there are properties out there that are five, six acres, and you can build those multifamilies out in, in, in the A1, A2 zones, but you still have all the, in, in the infrastructure that is needed, all of the same things as you would have down in, you know, in the main, in like the downtown Form-based code area. But this opens up a little bit more land and ability for developers to come in to build a multifamily, which would trigger the inclusionary housing if it's more than five units. So it's another incentive for developers to come in and build more affordable units.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Danny, we say developers, but there's no reason why a single-family homeowner who wants to put a, who wants, who has the space and the underlying
Correct.
has the underlying resources to do it, can't build a multifamily house for a multigenerational situation.
That is correct.
So we, we say developers, but this is also an opportunity for families to use their asset and diversify to a certain amount and work, and, and live together. Or live in it, you, you still can't rent them, but you can live there as two families.
Yeah, you could even, like, if you have a, a big enough lot, you could do a three-family home, you know.
Yeah. But, but, but this is not a, okay, developers, come in, buy up all the single families and replace them.
No.
That is not the intent.
Correct.
Right, yeah. And, you know, and again, it goes back to, you know, um, Alicia's presentation. We do have multifamily dwellings within the town.
Oh, sure.
Okay, and, and, and with that, it's like we've, we've almost made it difficult, you know, to, to do that by having a no in, in those two A1s and A2s.
And look at Washington Street, all the multifamily.
And they pay great taxes.
Yeah.
It's efficient.
Yeah, pervy, correct, and then Washington Street.
And this, this will also help us Yes, all, under the OSRD as well. This will allow us, you know, under the OSRD, you could do developments that are townhouse condos, like condominium style, and it doesn't have to be just single-family homes. It could be, you know, a condominium-style development that has a, you know, a, a, a center, a community center in the middle with, uh, you know, singles, doubles, triples, quads, built all around it as like, it almost builds like a community within it, and this will allow for that. Cause we could do the OSRD under this, because the language under the OSRD is the underlying zoning needs to allow those. So this would allow that to fall in there.
Beautiful.
So, you know, there's multiple ways this, this is a positive
Right, that's a great point, Danny, that you could, you could imagine an OSRD that has a blend of housing types and family structures, uh, community, you know, even, that, that really creates uh, an ecosystem of itself. I'd still like to see that closer to downtown, but
And, yeah, and, and actually, a perfect example that I can give you guys is, so in Framingham, there's a development, the, the old Millwood Golf Course was redeveloped, and this is basically exactly what it is. It was 115 acres and they did 70 acres of it, stayed open space, and the development was singles, doubles, triple, triples, and with a community center in the middle. And so like, it's its own little, uh, community area. It has ponds, it has like all these incentives, so it, it's just like an OSRD, and that's something that I feel like this town could have.
Cause this town is built in community sections.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody, you know, we are air, but everybody's got, you know, their
My neighborhood is better than yours. Um, Ken?
Yep.
I look at this and these changes, and I think about the property on East Main that we've gone around and around on that we've never done any work on. This would have been an opportunity there. I, without knowing the actual layout of the land and the sizes, that this would have been an opportu, this would have, this would have allowed that project to go forward.
Possibly.
And I think the, the general context is that we've heard over and over again at different public hearings and public meetings that people do not want to see air become gentrified.
Correct.
And they're deeply concerned that they want their children and grandchildren the opportunity to live in a nice town like this, to live here, to stay with their family and community. And the, the, the best way that we have to address that is by ensuring different, multiple tiers and layers of housing options. Because if it's just restricted to the single-family, we're, we're moving toward a, a greater, a more gentrified environment. It's only by assuring that diversity of housing type and price points that we can still have the kind of community that we want.
Agreed, yeah. All right, I'm just gonna move over to, to general business, all right? That also too, we went ahead and forbidding a special permit, making a special permit for the planning board. Um, again, it goes ahead and gives the, um, the feedback that is needed.
That also
It was originally a no.
Especially permit zone.
Yes, so this would, this, this would go to the, the fact that, so the planning board has the, reviews a lot of these residential, bigger unit, bigger developments. This gives the planning board, you know, we have a little bit more of that, uh, we see those projects come in more frequently.
Well, it's consistent across the line.
Yes.
That if we would do townhouses and multifamily, we would do it in all the
Correct.
those areas, most likely.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I did have one, a couple of quick things, but I think I'll just reinforce it a little bit more, so the, I have, I, I went back and I think I told you guys this, that I went back and I found a zoning, right, the zoning regulations from 2001. I don't know if you've heard me say this, Jeff, or not. And, and at that time, the open space residential was more, was closely called, it was called cluster zoning, at that language that was used. And at that time, cluster zoning did allow exactly what we're talking about, those, all those housing types. And the example that got built was Autumn Ridge, which was built under cluster zoning. It didn't have the component of the requirement of inclusionary housing at the time. They negotiated and gave the town two affordable, so there's two DEDs up there that are affordable. But there was no negotiation because we didn't have the inclusionary housing requirement. Somehow, when we went to the change, uh, through, to go the new zoning in 2018, and we changed the name to open space residential, the language that got changed, it referred back to the table. So even though the table formally always had an N there, the cluster housing allowed all housing types. So if you built a cluster, you overcame the table.
There's the break.
Then when we went with this, we put the language in that says, site plan review, special permit requirements for the land use district in that paragraph there. So it, it says allowable residential units, this is under the OSRD section. The allowable residential units may be developed as single-family, two-family, or multifamily dwellings, provided that the applicable special permit or site plan review requirements for the land use district. So we got a determination from town council, and she said, that's the land use district, you can't put it there. So there was kind of a deficiency that came about here that we're trying to rectify. So I don't, that's really deep.
It is, but good.
But I'm not sure, you know, it'll carry any weight, but it's almost like we went backwards.
We did.
Um, and therefore, we took that. So when people came to us, we did verbally ask some of these developers, can you put in more two families? Can you do this? Can you do that? But we ran right up against that table as well.
That was the problem. That's, that's the biggest problem with the OSRD is, basically, you're only That's, that's the biggest problem with the OSRD is basically you're only building single-family, and that's the only thing you can build if you're in the A1.
Based on the underlying.
Based on the underlying zoning, because.
The district.
Because of the district. Now, if you do an OSRD, if we were to pass this and build an OSR, oh, there was an OSRD that was being built, they would have the ability to have a mix of all of those types of units.
And maybe we get the credit for the, if they build multis over five, we would get the credit.
The inclusionary then ki- also kicks in as well.
Beautiful.
The other comment I wanted to make, just quickly, it's clear to us, we understand this, but I've heard a number of people, including other boards.
Mm-hmm.
Refer to a multifamily as a two-family. There's some confusion once in a while in town.
Yeah.
That a multi is more than one. But under our definition, it has to be three or more.
Correct.
So we go from single to twos to multis. We don't care if it's three. So it has to be three or more. But you'll hear occasionally, when, if you're talking to folks around, they may get confused, is what I'm getting at, that they'll think a two-family is a multifamily.
Right.
It's, it's gotta be three or more to be a multi.
And what distinguishes a townhouse from a two-family?
It's just the construction type.
Yeah, it's just the construction type. So a townhouse is typically the design, it's the way that the design is, you'll, it's usually those, uh, houses that are built vertically, like, so you'll have.
Typically vertical and typically kitchen on the second floor.
Exactly.
Typically kitchen. Typically kitchen is not on the line, on the ground floor.
Okay, I got it. Usually there's, there's a master bedroom on the first floor with a living room and all this stuff like that. Yeah.
Okay, great.
That, that was, that was kind of the working definition of a townhome. And they, and they have, yeah.
Kathleen has a question.
Who's it off you is?
Kathleen?
Hi, thank you. I have a quick clarification question. Um, so looking at the column that says, uh, general business district.
Mm-hmm.
So in that row 1.3, SPZ is flipping to SPB is, is the proposal for consistency. Um, what about SPZ in 1.1? Is, is there a reason that that, that one stays zoning, but the other one flips to planning?
In 1.1.
Cause it's really out of.
1.1 general business.
Yeah, so that was already existing. We're not changing that.
Because.
Yeah, we're just.
That's what she's asking.
But it doesn't get us to where we want to be.
Yeah.
It doesn't really help inclusionary housing.
Correct.
So the concept that we're basing the whole premise on is inclusionary housing and getting more affordable units. So in my, my opinion, that doesn't handle that question, because we're trying to get more multis, which generate the, the requirement for inclusionary housing and create the affordable units.
Yeah, that's, that's really what our focus was with this working group, was how do we increase affordable housing in this town?
Correct.
So we stayed away from the single-family stuff.
But that's a good question, Kathleen.
Yep. No good questions.
So then, how does flipping SPZ to SPB in 1.3 help with that goal?
In 1.3?
Yeah.
So, yeah, because that's the multifamily. So at that point, this, that's gonna allow, uh, developers or people who live in town to build units that are more, there's more than three units. Um, so, um, this will increase the likelihood of inclusionary housing, which is, uh, wh- where the affordable housing comes in, because we have, our trigger is five units or more. So if you're building multifamily, um, if you have more than five units, the inclusionary housing kicks in, and then affordable housing is required.
Her question is a little different.
Right. Well, I understand that.
She's asking, she understands all of that.
That was me earlier, was that, uh, consistency, that if you look across the row.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It, everything now, the special permit is before the planning board. But if you look across the column, now you have one for zoning and one for planning. That, that was my question was.
Oh, she's looking, she's talking about this one.
But her cons- she brought this up at the, the, the past meeting, and I think you gave me some data or thoughts about this offline. Why is some situations controlled by the planning board?
Yes.
And why are some situations controlled by the zoning board?
Yes.
In this case, I, I think I answered the first one, because we're just not interested in making changes for the single-family use under the affordable, but it's still a great question. How do we make the, why is the difference, why does zoning control a part of it and planning control a part of it?
Yeah, so typically, uh, was, uh, prior to there being planning boards, uh, zoning board acted as the site plan review and as the special permit granting authorities for all of the town. So sometimes what happened was, a lot of the zoning boards kept some of the special permits and was carried over even when the planning board was created. And so sometimes you'll have some inconsistencies on which board handles which special permit, even if it's the same special permit, but it depends on the district. So that's why you'll see a lot of those differences within the whole table of use of regulations, because, uh, that's where it came from. So planning boards came after the zoning board, so it, it's not always very, you know, it wasn't clean when the change was made to adding the planning board.
Hold on, we got, I got a couple of people backed up, Nathan and Jeff, but.
Yes.
I have a question for Janet first. Will you, are you, have you made a presentation to, or do you plan to make a presentation to the zoning board?
21st.
Yes, next week.
Because I, I just want to i- iterate something important here. Um, you know, town boards respect each other.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
Certainly, and, and under no circumstance will we recommend changes that affects another board without obviously their input considerations.
See, and the, and the whole thing behind, you know, again, the zoning board, I, I couldn't make their February meeting.
Sure, I understand.
I mean, their January meeting. So, and, you know, I, I got it on the February agenda, but I also too, wanted to see all the others beforehand.
Thank you.
Because March, you know, if this is gonna get implemented, you need to do your public hearings.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and so I'll, and I'll be there, uh, at the zoning board meeting as well.
Thank you. Nathan?
So I, to answer Kathleen's question, I do think this makes sense to go from plan, zoning board to planning board. When you look at the whole of the changes, we're just making two articles, uh, two articles refer, uh, particular to this. Uh, so when you look at the 10.3, 3 recommendation to have the planning board, uh, allow new construction of multifamilies, um, per, per the Massachusetts, uh, you know, referring to the Massachusetts guideline, it, it gives, it, it gives a consistent, uh, uh, review board for, um, for, for what we are now.
Proposing.
Proposing as an authority of the planning board.
And, and, and for, for reference also, Charlie Schultz, uh, actually, we've talked about this as well, he's working on actually reviewing the table of use regulations to, because of the fact that there are some inconsistencies on, uh, special permits and who, what's by right, and some of the uses as well. So this is going to get cleaned up as well. This is on our list, um, for, for the working group as well, for future, you know, projects. But, um, so eventually we will be going through all of these and cleaning it all up, but this is just the initial portion of this.
I'd like to comment.
Thank you.
Nathan.
That helps a lot.
Nathan's remarks wrapped this thing up very nicely, I thought. If you start from that premise or that paragraph, and you work your way back, it lends itself right into this discussion.
Beautiful.
Because it really is all about how do we develop a better way to, to permit, you know, the inclusionary housing requirements? So I like.
Jeff, did you have a comment to make?
Um, I was going, Nathan said it very eloquently. Um, I say it differently when it comes to general business. When you want to put a single unit detached dwelling on a general business property, that's a change of use, that's special permit by zoning board of appeals.
Good.
When you get to the point where the underlying land is large enough to support multifamily dwellings, then it becomes a site plan review of the planning board. And I think those are the appropriate pockets for it to go into. And again, use tables, it's the intersection of the column and the row is unique in every single one.
Correct.
And so, um, it, it's a great question, but we've got general business properties in this town that can probably support upwards of a dozen to 15 units, which depending on how our inclusionary works, could bring us anywhere from a handful to two handfuls of units, based on how they're sized and what, and where they're located.
Right.
So it's just, it's building back, it, building in diversity of housing, so that folks from all economic strata can afford to stay in this town and be in this town.
Yep. And that's what we were focused in on. All right. Anything else from anybody on, on that? All right, we're gonna move down to 1.6. Um, we're gonna just, we wanted to change the wording, because we really don't have a definition for apartment, um, make it into dwelling units, because that is in the zoning board.
And that is defined.
I mean, the zoning bylaw, and that's defined. So we thought that that would be a good idea. Then moving down to 1.7, same thing with dwelling units, um, instead of being just one single unit, it can be more than one. So we wanted to put the plural in there, as well as making sure that people understood that instead of the ground floor of the building, it's the elevation of the building at street level.
Right.
Because ground floor could be under street level. I mean, depends upon, you know, where the ground is.
No, that's a good catch.
Okay, um, so these were things like we, you know, wanted to focus on. And then one thing that, um, is on the old, you know, the, the prior one, is on the.
The downtown, so the downtown air, um, form-based code section, for some reason, uh, 1.7 was a no?
No.
No, it was some.
SPB.
SP, yeah, sorry.
Was it, was it an SPB?
Yeah.
Sorry. Was SPB, uh, for some reason, but the wet, in the West Air form-based code, it was permitted. So we were just, we felt that it should be consistent with, in both form-based codes.
Correct.
You just can't get good help from volunteer boards, can you, Ben?
So.
It was pointed out, we're elected.
That's right.
It's even more difficult to have on this board.
But no matter what, you have to put your name into.
The bar is high.
So, so these are the, the proposed amendments that, uh, the working group has kind of been working on and had been going around to all the boards, trying to present, and, and now we're looking to try to get it over to the Springtown meeting. Um, but the planning board will also have an additional, additional two, um, other zoning amendments coming to you.
So there's at least these two.
Yep.
The table use regulations, the inclusionary housing language.
Right.
And there's some other additional items that.
There'll be the updated zoning map.
The updated zoning map.
And then as well as some updated language for the zoning by, for the zoning Board of Appeals section in the bylaw, which differentiates what, uh, what the board makeup is.
And these will all be for Springtown?
Correct.
You're taking the rest of the year off after that, right, Danny?
Yeah.
No, he can't.
Go to St. Martin.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, you can't, because when I spoke. When I spoke to the select board, the select board said thumbs up for the working group to continue going and.
Yes.
And looking at stuff, because.
Technical question, or wait, do we have an, wanna close it up?
Well, I think.
I got a technical question for moderator.
Oh, thank you.
If we bring this table to town meeting, and there's opposition about parts of the table, does it throw the whole amendment out? Can you amend it at town meeting floor inside the table? For instance, if you needed to back something up, but keep something else in there? Could you research that a little bit or?
If you don't want an answer now, yes, but there are ways, we, we, in, in town meeting time, town meeting time does allow for the amendment of articles on the warrant. And just to give you an idea of a conversation I've been in with the Mass Moderators Association over the last couple of weeks, um, there are towns that will put a note in the warrant that says nothing more than budget item coming forward, and they won't actually be, they're smaller towns, and this is how they've always worked. A warrant used to be nailed to a tree. It was a, it was an advisory of a meeting coming up.
Yeah.
These days, we go real down dirty in the details in order for town meetings to not take weeks to get.
Right, right, right.
So there's a balancing act. So amendments are allowed, we have allowed amendments in the past, it depends on how they're offered on the floor, and if they're supported by people in the room.
So that's my, my concern.
That's Massachusetts law, how it's done, so, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Mm-hmm.
We'll get into that later. Thank you, Hannah.
Well, you know, just make it the last article of the night. No, kidding. I'm only kidding. That was being facetious, people who are listening.
All right, um, so do any other, I mean, that's, that's it from the working group.
That was outstanding.
All right, and I'm just gonna go ahead and hand this over to you, saying.
Please do.
It's all yours now.
No, I think we, uh, on behalf of.
Let me just check to see if anyone on the Zoom has any other questions? Can you just raise your hand?
While we're waiting for them to raise their hands, if they would do so, I just want to thank Jennifer, excellent presentation. Also thank all the members of the working group for the fine work that you've done. This is excellent work.
Ken and Nathan and Dan.
Yeah, it's outstanding.
All right. I was saying, we all wore our multiple hats.
Yes, Nathan, please. The work is not done.
Oh, the work is not done?
No, it's not.
No, that's why it's a town.
Danny's not gonna, no, oh, no, um, for, for these two articles, the working group work is done.
Now our work.
Danny, Danny's not gonna go on vacation.
I still gonna continue the.
Et cetera.
We have to sweat it out.
Not just because of the articles in, um, making, uh, getting, getting into the town meeting, but under the umbrella of affordability, uh, if there is a interest in moving to smaller units, uh, which, which there very well may be on the horizon, uh, in, so cottage and bungalows.
You can do that.
That there's, there is still, um, work to be done after this work.
Oh, yeah.
After this working group. And, uh, that's, that, so this is, this is like, um, it's like an iceberg, right? This is the first, this is what you can see above the water, but there's, there's, there may still be more coming.
Yes.
And I think that, that working groups should continue to work on, uh, continuing to make affordable housing, small A affordable particularly, in air.
I agree. Thank you, Nathan. Jonathan?
Yeah, cause, um, what it got, one of the form, um, pictures that they had for the housing forum, um, is individuals really enjoyed the cottages, you know, that they had, um, it's over in Westford, um, where it was around a, a circle, like a, um, a it's over in Westford, um, where it was around a circle, like a, a common area. And I believe there's probably about 20 of these cottages, all affordable. So you'd have families living next to each other. Um, but it was, it was wonderful. That, that received the highest likes.
Head over to Devens and see what's going on over there. They've done a great, they've done a great application of that. Yes.
Not, not cottages, though.
Uh, smaller buildings in a cluster.
So.
Understood. Smaller buildings in a cluster.
The design wise, construction.
Okay, you're talking Emerson Green?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah. They're, they're, they're bigger than, than the cottages. These are small.
Understood, but if you don't wanna drive a long way, you can go down this.
Laurel Park, North Hampton is exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, exactly.
I lived in Laurel Park.
So you know what I'm talking about.
We rented in Laurel Park in college, where my first cat came from.
You got it. All right. Well, no, again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we really do appreciate it. And, um, I'll tell that to the, you know, the Affordable Housing Committee, too.
Excellent.
So, again, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we just review the table of uses? That was part.
Yeah, pretty much.
So really, it's just the project status updates?
Yes.
Do you have any?
I do.
What do we got?
So, uh, Nasoya has reached out. Uh, they plan on doing a minor modification to the plans. Uh, there's some sections of the building that they will not be building. Um, so it's reduction of square footage, which is good. Uh, we met with them about two weeks ago. Uh, they're looking to hopefully have, uh, plans submitted March or April. So, um, and in discussions with Charlie, it's, we've considered that it is a minor modification, cause it is a reduction of almost 40,000 square feet.
Oh, wow.
They're still gonna keep the stormwater the same. So just in case.
They're just not building the building right now.
Yeah, for room later, expansion room. Yeah, that's smart. Very smart.
Exactly.
Good, good, good.
Um, 91 Groton Harvard Road, that's right next to the transfer station, uh, was bought by a, um, new.
That's the old trucking place?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's, was bought out by a new concrete construction. Uh, they will be coming before us for, uh, site plan review. Um, they're proposing a new building. Um, they, we should be having, uh, next week, Charlie and I will be meeting with, uh, GPR to discuss the application, what's gonna be necessary for them. Um, but, uh, they're looking to be submitting for us for site plan review. They'll, they'll need some other things as well. They need to go to the ZBA.
There's, there's some issues, right?
Yep.
There's stuff to talk about.
27 and 29 Harvard Road. So, uh, I sent the zoning, uh, map over to Attorney Gibbons. Um, they don't think that they need to come in for, um, for the meeting on the 27th. Uh, he wanted me to see how the board felt. I agree with them at this point. The map is, is done. We're just waiting to get to town meeting. Uh, there's no real updates from there.
What was I thinking of? And just tell us, tell us what happened with, just remind everyone what happened with Stratton Hill?
Yes.
They posted.
So Stratton Hill, um, they are, so at the next meeting, they will be continuing to April 9th. Um, the, they're still working on the redesign plans. Um, and they've also gave, given us an extension to May 31st, um, which has already been submitted to the town clerk, and it's posted for the extension. Um.
The property across from Sandy Pond, remember 70?
71.
71 Sandy Pond Road.
Yes, so, uh, nothing there. Um, I know town meeting, um, will be.
Are you familiar with what happened at the select board meeting about 71 Sandy Pond Road?
Please share with us.
Uh, do you mind? Town has entered into an agreement, um, to purchase the property. I'm not gonna quote you the numbers, I don't know them off the top of my head. I mean, Mr. Diskin could do it. But they're going to bring forth, uh, the Spring Town Meeting, an opportunity for the town to purchase the land.
Correct.
And use the land, um, for recreation purposes, as an extension of the Sandy Pond Beach Complex. It'll be, there have, there have been a, a couple, three, um, kind of designs that have been offered by Charlie. Um, that includes some parking and some picnic and some pavilion type stuff, but that is not set. It's the acquisition of the land to be used by the Sandy Pond Complex, is really what it's for. And that's kind of tops of the waves, guys, at this point.
Yep.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, anything, anything else?
Yes. Uh, so, uh, actually Heather and I and Matt have been meeting to kind of go through the stormwater, uh, bylaw and the regulations. Um, we, we actually had a, quite a good meeting last week, just to go through the regulations and the things that we need to start, like following up, making sure, being put into decisions. So I'm actually in the works of creating a stormwater decision that'll be, that'll have continuing, uh, conditions, just like I do with site plan review, that will have all these, uh, triggers that are in the regulations. They will be now in the decision, so that when, uh, when we get an approval, everyone knows, you know, when stormwater, uh, when the reports are due, it, that the decision needs to be recorded, that the O and M needs to be recorded. Um, so we're working on a bunch of these things right now, um, just to try to make sure that we're staying up to date on the stormwater regulations, because there are things that haven't been, been done, you know, since, since they've been put in place. So now we're, you know, picking it up, trying to make sure we get everything, uh, followed. There are gonna be some proposed changes as well, because the stormwater handbook is being changed, or has been approved to be changed, uh, which should be coming out in the six months, you said?
At last, from what I've heard, it's about six months, but I, I, I don't know. They've already extended the public hearings for the act, so I don't know.
This is for the MS, the MS, the MS war?
No.
Stormwater.
This is stormwater.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's gonna be some changes proposed in the, in there. So, uh, you know,